We're reviewing the minutes of the last meeting. Lauren Miller was not present. And I believe it's, I think it's punctuation, but Greg is the president of the Friends of the Simsbury Public Library, not Heather. And then, under the Friends report, it talked about people being excited about the new strategic plan. I think that should be the new strategic plan effort for 2022 to 2026. Otherwise, the way it's written, it sounds like we already have it. Are there any other changes that anyone has? If not, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended? Polly, thank you. Second?
Second.
Mark, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Cast unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the election of the vice chair. Lauren Miller, when she had to resign because of moving out of Simsbury, was the vice chair. So at this point in time, I would take nominations for someone to fill her space until next December, when after town elections, the next election of officers take place. Do we have a motion? Mark?
I would love to make a motion.
Okay.
I am extremely enthusiastic about nominating Polly Rice to become vice chair of the trustees. Polly is very active in the Friends of the Simsbury Public Library. She just was reappointed to the board, the trustees. When I first came on board, almost five years ago, she was a member, and she's been extremely active as a trustee. And I think she would just make a great adjust. I think she would be great as being vice chair.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Kathleen?
Get on mute, Kathleen.
Kathleen's on mute. I saw her raise her hand, though.
Oh, okay.
Kathleen, you're on mute. There.
Thank you. Yes, I second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor of electing, Mark?
No, I'm in favor.
Of electing Polly Rice as vice chair? Would you signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Were there any objections? Okay, so Polly Rice will be the vice chair for the board. The next item is public audience. And we don't, this is my fault. Once we went to doing this virtually, it hadn't crossed my mind that we really didn't publicize a way for the public to contact us. I will come up with an email address via Erica's or something for us by the next meeting, and I'll pass that to Mary Ann so she can put it on the agenda. So people, if they do have public comment, can send them to us, and we will read them to us until we can, at some point, get back to meeting face to face and having people attend face to face. What prompted this also was there was a lot of activity, I understand, through Amber, thank you, Amber, Simsbury Neighbors Unite, primarily concerned about access to computers being limited to Tuesday, Wednesday, and Saturday. I will address the hours later and what is changing just to recap what Lisa has already sent to all of us. But for those listening, it had already been planned that beginning on March 22nd, a week from today, patrons will be able to sign up for computer time for the length of one hour on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, when the library in general is closed to the public. And if someone wants to contact the library to sign up, they should dial 860-658-7663 and hit 2 for the extension. I don't know if anyone else received anything from the public. The next would be communications, which is similar, but not exact. I haven't gotten any in addition to that. Amber, I didn't know if you had gotten any more that you wanted to speak to?
No, I did not receive additional personal communications from the public about that. I think that addressing the computer hours primarily addressed the concern of a particular patron that reached out. The other concerns just really had to do with people stating that they understand that libraries are community center and part of being able to enjoy the libraries being there, which I think we all understand. And, you know, people also were very complimentary of the staff, and they realized that everyone at the library is working really hard and that a lot of options are available through eBooks and curbside pickup, and a lot of people have utilized that, but that there are just some aspects to physically being able to be there that obviously, you know, they can't enjoy. My only other comment on this would be that I have also raised the issue, not really with the library, but more broadly, when town buildings are going to be opening and what the plan is for their reopening with the Board of Selectmen. And I think that especially in light of the governor's announcement today, moving up the vaccination schedule, that hopefully, the town and the town manager will be addressing this more broadly, because I think the public is going to be very interested in knowing what the plan is for all the town buildings.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on communications? Lisa, do you have anything?
Don't.
Okay. As we did last month, Lisa has asked the department heads to make the board aware, because we have so many new members, of telling us about their departments, their role, and what they see in the future. So tonight, I'm very pleased to say that Sue Ray is with us. And Sue, I will turn this over to you to explain what Adult Services does and is responsible for.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and it's nice to see some people that I know from before on the board. I'd like to talk to you about my department. And when I started here, actually, it was the reference department, but now it's the Adult Services Department, which I think reflects the goal of the library even better. I joke with my staff sometimes that we're almost like the Jack of all trades department, and you'll kind of hear that as I talk to you. Presently, my department consists of three full-time staff, and when we're fully staffed, seven part-time staff numbers. We're primarily responsible for responding to the public with answers to their questions, assisting them with technology, training them in the Libraries and Invitors Workshop. We train them on their own personal technology. So when birthdays come and Christmas comes and they get new technology, and they don't know how to use it, we work with people individually to train them on that. And as you were talking, we help them with computer assistance. I also oversee all their aspects of their hiring, their training, and the scheduling of the department. And we're sort of like, we may be a small department, but there's so much more to us, because we reach across all the departments. We work with the teen librarian. We work with the borrowing department. We work with displays. We handle some of their, we handle the publicity for some of them and other functions like that. My department is primarily responsible for the nonfiction collection and the Simsbury collection. And one of the, I guess every cloud has to have a silver lining so that when we shut down with COVID, we had already been in the process of planning on moving the business collection and integrating that into the main collection. And we were also moving some of the staffs to lower them to make the visibility better throughout the library. So when the library shut down, it gave us the opportunity to move that entire business collection. We weeded the collections. We shifted the entire library. We moved collections from the Simsbury area, which was in the, it was, had been in the business area. We moved it all the way down. So that was a big project that I had been planning for, for two or three years out, but we were able to get that done during the summer. I also, excuse me, I also oversee the materials budget for the nonfiction collection. So we do collection development, weeding. We do readers advisory for nonfiction. We help kids with their school projects. I also handle all the memorial donations made to the library, and I purchase the memorial books for both the library and the Friends. We've also were able to do a major shift in the teen collection. So one of the projects that I wanted to do, which we were able to do, was put the teens' collection all in one space. Primarily, a lot of the nonfiction collection for the adults had gone into the teen area, but with all the shifting and weeding that we did, we're all, now we're able to make a dedicated teen space. Let's see, a lot of my time is spent with adult programming. My team and I work with, oh, we do music programs and all different things. We work with the Friends a lot, with the author programs. Let's see. We do a lot of contracts with people. Let's see, I lost my place. I'm sorry. Because of the pandemic, a lot of our live programming, most of my department does a lot of the live programming in the library for adults. Because of the pandemic, a lot of that was put aside. Because of the age group that we handle, a lot of people were unfamiliar with Zoom and web meetings and the Facebook Live. So that took us a while to get back. A lot of our presenters at that time were a little concerned about doing things on Zoom, because we, everybody anticipated we'd be up and running in no time at all. Sometimes, when we do program planning, as I was watching the basketball games over the weekend, it reminded me of how much I missed the live programming that we've done at the library, because I really believe that the library is the heart of the community. And I was mentioning to someone that my staff sometimes seems a little crazy with the ideas that I come up with, because we had, I came up with the idea that we should do a tailgate party for the UConn women's basketball game. And we did that in conjunction with the senior center, because we realized that a lot of seniors loved the women, UConn women's basketball team, but they watched the games by themselves. So in conjunction with the senior center, we did, we really did a tailgate party. I got a real live tailgate from one of the maintenance people's trucks. We had coolers. We had food. We had dessert. We had people bringing in desserts to share with us. So, you know, and everybody was sitting there cheering the team on. So I'm looking forward to things like that happening again. One of my staff handles the Zoom account for the library, and she schedules not only for the library programs, but the Friends, the Great Decisions, and some of the town committees. We've developed partnerships with a lot of different people around town. A few of them would be the Senior Center, the Grange, the Lions Club, Metro B, the Land Trust, and the Historical Society, and that's just a few of them that we've done. We've also done work with the VNA for the flu clinics, and now we're working with the Department of Health for the vaccine clinics coming up. And we've done, like, we've held Red Cross blood drives, because that's what libraries do. We're part of the community. One of the things that my department does is we maintain and we refresh the seed library. And I've noticed that some of you have used our seeds, and hopefully, they'll be growing. We're also in charge of the library's maker space. I oversee all the equipment in the library's maker space. We maintain it. I help purchase it. We just redid the maker space, so the closure also helped me to spend my time renovating and reorganizing the whole space so that when we reopen again, there'll be more equipment there, and I'm hoping to be trained on that. As an offshoot of us having the maker space, we have 10 sewing machines, which actually, out of that, those sewing machines, we have our own charity sewing group that works out of the library. And they do a lot of good things for the neonatal units over at UConn, St. Francis, Hartford Hospital, and other areas. During the week, I write the weekly newsletter, which promotes our adult programs and special events. I oversee the library's website, keep the information fresh, maintain its security, and I do all the software updates that seem to be occurring more and more. I also, as Mark knows, I also train the staff on the library's program room equipment. And one of our goals is to keep the technology up to date down in the rooms so that, because we have so many different people and so many different groups that come in to use our program rooms during the course of the year, we want it to be as seamlessly as possible. So when you come in to use our room, no matter what, who you are or what group you are, you come in, you plug in your computer, and everything works fine. A lot of the things that I do when the library is open is I schedule the meeting rooms downstairs. We have the four meeting rooms downstairs. And I schedule them, work with the Public Works Department for the setups and the technology, and let's see, collect the fees for them when there's a charge for it. Just to give you an idea, my department last year reserved the four rooms upstairs over 1,100 times. And before the pandemic, we had reserved the rooms an average of 50 times a month downstairs. And there's a fine balancing act sometimes, because everybody wants to come to the library, and they all want to use the same rooms. So it's balancing the town, the Friends, the needs of the library, the needs of the town, the needs of the Friends, and then the outside groups. Sometimes, it can be pretty harrowing. On a small note, this is something that I never learned in library school, but I am actually in charge of the maintenance of the piano that's downstairs in the library program room. And I never knew that a piano needed to be watered, but it does, and I make sure that it stays in tune. My staff and I oversee the library's social media accounts on Facebook and Instagram. I'm the primary staff contact to the Public Works and Computer Departments so that if something goes down in the library, people come to me, and there's one person just contacting them. So if a faucet breaks in the bathroom upstairs, say, I contact custodians. And that way, not 15 people are contacting the custodians. So we're trying to streamline all of that. Let's see, I'm a notary, and recently, some of my staff and I have become passport agents. So we are hoping to see that come back again. During the school year, I worked with the Simsbury High School, and we worked with students from the STEP program there. And we usually get one or two volunteers who come in and do special projects at the library. As a, I also serve as liaison to the Aging and Disability Committee in town. I sit on the Recycling Committee in town. I sit on the Board of Directors of the Historical Society, and I'm a member of the Lions Club, which in a way is nice, because it allows me to hear what other groups in town are doing, and we can incorporate the library. So by working with the Historical Society, we were able to use their tea room to do some programs. By working with the Lions, they come and they volunteer at our coffee houses that we do and some of our big maker space maker events. And that's about it. And I think because of my efforts on the Recycling Committee, we have those recyclable cans and bottles around the library now. So I'm hoping that that will help. And one of the major events that I've been involved in right now is I am the co-chair of the CLA Virtual Conference this year. And last year, one of my staff members was a co-chair also. And I think that's about it. So if you have any questions?
Few things to keep you busy.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, everybody keeps, the people of the Lions, they keep asking me, when are we going to do the pediatric eye screening again? And I keep reminding them, we'll do that when the schools open up.
Does anyone have any questions about any of the services that the Adult Services offer?
One of the nice things that we've added this year is that one of my staff members is a liaison to the Spirit Council. So we're very involved with the town with the equity, diversity, and inclusion that's going on.
They do a wonderful job, Sue. No question.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Sue, for that great presentation. I knew a lot of what you did just from knowing you over the years, but wow, I don't know how you fitted all into a day, into 40 hours a week. There was a lot that you do that I hadn't realized, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. It's not a definite, it's definitely not a nine-to-five job.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments, especially about either Sue or Adult Services? Sue, I just thank you so much. And John has been very happy with the seeds he got from the seed catalog.
I hope they grow.
Yes, I do, too. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
The next item is the Friends report, but I don't think Greg is on the meeting with us. So I don't know if anyone else, Lisa, was there anything from last month's Friends meeting we should be aware of?
Don't believe so. Kathleen, correct me if I'm wrong. One of the things that they have assured the library staff of is that the support budget will obviously not be as large as it has been in the past, but we can roll over the funds that we do not use this year to next year, just as we did last year, so that will be a big help.
Yes. I have to say, I've been spoiled by having Greg here at all of our meetings. So I wasn't quite prepared to give that report. But I don't think of, I can't think of anything else significant that came up, and we will be meeting again soon.
All right, they meet again this week. But I think, too, in case you don't know, the annual luncheon has been pushed off till October.
Oh, okay. That's always a fun event for those of you that haven't gone with the author luncheon.
One thing I could report that you may not, you may know or may not, is that the Books to Your Door is up and running again. And there are a lot of new volunteers, including myself. I'll have my first chance this week to deliver books. So there, you know, the Friends do a great job with that program, and they're glad to be back going, starting again, so.
And where they were doing it bi-weekly, starting this month, it's now back to weekly.
It's weekly, yes.
And I can say, based on the phone calls I get, people are very appreciative of that service.
Thank you. Okay, just briefly. I just wanted to reiterate for anyone that's watching us under my report, the new things that are happening as far as access to the library. And this is all on the website, on the library website, where anyone can go to to find information. But I just thought, if anyone was listening and wondering, I would just like to go through. Starting next Monday, we'll be open until 8:00 on Tuesday. This is different from the hours that we have now. Also, starting next week, the curbside pickup on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday will shift from the lower level to the upper level. And the hours for pickup Monday, Wednesday, and Friday will be 10 to 1 and 2 to 5. And as I said, also, starting next Monday, for that week, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, patrons can call 860-658-7663, extension 2, and sign up for an hour of computer time, even though the library itself isn't open to the general public. And then, starting April 5th, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, the library will go to pre-COVID hours, which means on Thursday, Tuesday, and Thursday will be open from 9:30 to 8:30, and Saturday, 9:30 to 5:00, Lisa?
5:30.
5:30. So we are getting much closer. And I just want to reiterate, Lisa's staff has been challenged. You know, I think anyone in the public service and face to face has been very challenged. The reason we've done the alternating days is the days that the library isn't open, it gets an in-depth cleaning, and the town hall is open on those days, and it's vice versa. But one thing that Lisa pointed out to me, which I think is important for us all to understand, with the management approach taken as they have, it ensures there are basically two groups. One group is in the, one group of staff is in the library, face to face with our patrons, and the other group is working remotely from home. But taking this approach, what it has meant is that if for some reason, one of the staff members comes down with COVID, then the other cohort, the other half, can step in. Instead of, if everyone, all the staff was in the library because it was fully open, we would have to shut it for up to two weeks. And that certainly happened at restaurants. It's happened in a lot of places. So by using this approach, we really have a much better chance of being able to continue uninterrupted. There, we are looking, I think we're all looking forward to being able to safely, that's, I'm phrasing that, safely reopen as soon as we can safely. There are two things that are utilizing the library. One, starting April 7th, every Wednesday, the Farmington Valley Health System will be doing vaccinations for COVID in both of the large program rooms downstairs, which will be a very helpful thing for all of our residents, that they can go someplace local and be able to get their shots. And also, they, in conjunction with the Senior Center, there also will be tax preparation done for Simsbury residents at the library on the lower level. So we're getting there. Wednesdays, as Lisa's pointed out, will be a challenge going forward, because as long as the clinics are there, we don't have any excess amount of parking. So it's going to be a challenge to reopen while that's going on. But I think we're making great strides. And the best news is, everyone's being safe and staying healthy, our patrons and our staff, and that's very important. Are there any questions about any of that? As I said, this is all on the website for anyone listening, but I just wanted people to be aware that we are trying to open up as quickly as we can, but keeping safety in mind is our first goal. Anyone else want to add anything, Lisa?
No, I think it's important that you pointed out that we are working as a staff on an A and B shift so that if someone should come in contact with someone with COVID, or if one of the staff comes down with COVID, we're not totally quarantining the entire staff at a time. And again, I mean, as much as the public would want the library to open, I think Sue pointed out, too, that the library staff can't wait for the public to be in the building all the time. There's a certain energy that comes with having the people in the building, because really, the people are the heart of the library. The community is the heart of the library. So we're very much looking forward to having everyone back all the time.
Right. Okay, if there aren't any other questions from the board, then I'll turn it over to you, Lisa, for your director's report.
Sure, I was just going to point out some highlights. Mary Ann, you already mentioned the hours that we'll be expanding to, and of course, the Farmington Valley Health District Vaccine Clinic on Wednesdays, starting April 7th. In the Adult Department, they developed, as you know, an online request form for the seed library, which was a really great idea, and I'm so glad that they came up with that, and I'm so glad that people are using it. Rachel Gravel, the head of Borrowing and Technical Services, facilitated the purchase and installation of the new display piece in the circulation area. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it yet, but that was generously funded through a gift from the Friends. It's the perfect piece of furniture for where it's positioned. So she's very happy with it, and I am, too. And I think the staff is as well. The Children's Department last month created 11 YouTube videos and had 572 views. I don't know if any of you took advantage of it, but the Borrowing and Technical Services Department created Blind Date with a Book last month. It's something we've been doing for the past seven or eight years, right, Sue? Always well-received, and people find new authors that they wouldn't have found otherwise. Mary Ann, you pointed out the tax appointments. Tax appointments, and the appointments can be made through the Senior Center. Let's see. Also, interesting and exciting, Rachel worked to get three additional Wi-Fi mobile hotspots that people can borrow, because we know that some of the areas in town are really not that great with internet service. Stephanie Prado, who's head of Children's Services, worked with the New England Library Association to help develop a new virtual New England Library leadership program that will actually be happening this year. And Sherm, who's the Business and Career Center Coordinator, continues to work with the Economic Development Commission on all of their missions and objectives. And Sue pointed out that Lindsay Neffinger, who is one of our Adult Services librarians, is the liaison to the Spirit Council. And they did a facilitated discussion on affordable housing in Simsbury, which was And they did a facilitated discussion on affordable housing in Simsbury, which was very engaging. 82 people attended that. That was, it was a really good discussion. And then, in conjunction with the Friends, we had an author visit by Gretchen Sorin, who discussed her book Driving While Black, although also a very good conversation. 58 people attended that. Also, new last month, Rachel Gravel developed four conversation kits around equity, diversity and inclusion. So the kits have multiple copies of one book, so everyone reads the same book, and then it facilitates discussion. There's a, there's a question and answer guide that also goes with all of the books so that you have some resources to start the discussion and the conversation. And then, too, the library staff started their professional development journey into equity, diversity and inclusion last month with a workshop that was an introduction to the concepts. And we also have more workshops planned throughout the spring on EDI. And then what we'll do is we'll take that and incorporate EDI into all the ways that we work throughout the day at the library. And I'm happy to answer questions if anyone has any.
Anyone, then, do we want to, do you want to go over the budget piece, Lisa?
Sure. I've been sending you updates as they occur. Last week, the Board of Selectmen approved the town budget to send on to the Board of Finance. What was included was the library increase of $8,000 for children's materials, as well as the $5,760 for the technology replacement. The Board of Selectmen will present that budget to the Board of Finance tomorrow evening at 5:45. That will be a Zoom meeting. You can watch on SCTV if you're interested. So from there, the Board of Finance will decide what moves forward from that Board of Selectmen budget. The public hearing on the budget will be Tuesday, April 6th, also at 5:45 via Zoom. And there are additional public hearings scheduled, should they be needed, but I don't have those dates off the top of my head. And thank you to everyone who wrote in supporting increases to the library budget. I think that was very helpful. Everyone noticed that there was more than a handful of library supporters that were read that night, so I appreciated that. And I think the Board of Selectmen did too.
They've always appreciated that when there are people there and they know that they've got a very supportive base, it makes it easier for them to side with us. Are there any other questions on the budget? Or on our current operating budget, which Lisa sent out the update earlier?
There isn't really anything of note to, to discuss. We're pretty much on target where we're supposed to be in February, so.
Great. Our last agenda item, then, I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen and Heather to give us an update on the Strategic Plan Committee.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll start, and then Heather, please chime in if there's anything you want to add. The committee did meet last month, and we have, so we got to meet everybody. I think we have one more member that will be appointed to the committee. And we've developed a working timeline for our effort. We meet again next week, and we're in the process of developing survey questions or a survey to reach out and find out what members of the community are thinking, and so we can incorporate that into our strategic plan. And that's where we are for now. As I say, we meet again this week. We hope to make progress on our timeline. So far, it's, it's, I will say, it's been a challenge doing it by Zoom, as you all would appreciate. It's so much easier to brainstorm when you're in the room, same room with people. But that said, I think we're coming along quite well at this point. So I, anything you'd like to add, Heather?
No, I think you pretty much covered it. Really, Kathleen said, we are just trying to get the the survey sorted and, and how we'd like that to look, and, and then move on from ways to distribute and advertise. So I think it sounds good.
Thank both of you so much. I don't have anything else on our agenda. Does anyone else have any items they would want to put forward for another time or comments?
Let me just put a comment on, on tonight's meeting. I just got a call from the zoning commission that they were not being streamed. And I checked, and we're not being streamed either. We're going, evidently, they're going out to YouTube, so I assume this meeting is also going out to YouTube. But it looks like the TV injection system at SCTV has failed. That's my role as the SCTV geek. So, and, and the meeting is being recorded, as far as I can tell.
Okay.
So, sorry about that.
Does that mean we have to do the motion again for Vice Chairman, do you know, Lisa?
I don't believe so. Unfortunately, this has happened to other meetings as well, and there's really nothing that we can do.
Okay. Well, I hope you all enjoy the sunny days. It's cool, but at least it's bright and sunshiny, so. But we will meet again next month, and hopefully, you know, the Board of Finance will have a good feel for the whole budget in general tomorrow night. We'll see where it goes from there. So thank you, everybody. Holly?
I just wanted to say hi and thank you all for your warm welcome. I'm Holly McGrath. I'm very happy to be a part of the board, so, just so you hear my voice. Happy to be here.
Holly's been, always lived in town. So she's been, you know, at Simsbury right from the beginning. Anyone else have anything? Well, then we'll see you next month, or hopefully even earlier casually, not with an official meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.